I'd like to call the Monday, August 21st, meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. I'd like to ask if there's anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting. We have a representative from the Telegram with an audio recording and we also have a video recording by Auburn Community Cable. If we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item is public comment and we have Bob Plutukas, who signed up to speak on positive imagery. Mr. Plutukas, if you could just give your address for the record, please.
Bob Plutukas, 231 Milbury Street, Precinct 1, Town Meeting Member. As a teenager, I read a book that stood with me the rest of my life by Ben Hogan. And although it had a lot of techniques in it, one of the things that came out of it was positive mental imagery. And the power of that, I've tried to use the rest of my life, becoming more solutions-oriented than problem-oriented. In 2006, the Veterans Memorial Corridor was completed. I was proud to be the chairman of that for the last eight years of it. And one of the things that we ran into was that people felt that the town was not going to support the maintenance of the parks. We heard that from many people. They were wrong. And from time to time, I like to come up here and I would like to thank the Auburn Water District for the wonderful job they've done at the Cusi Memorial, honoring all veterans of the Vietnam era, not only those in country, but all Vietnam-era veterans. And I just want to thank the Auburn Water District. They've done it now 11 years. And they don't get enough congratulations on that. So I want to thank them as the former head of that committee. I also would like to suggest to the Select Board, as I drive around town, going on the theme of positive imagery, that it might be nice to select five or 10 businesses and just honor them for the wonderful job that they've spent, in some cases, tens of thousands of dollars, in maintaining their area. As I drive down Milbury Street, the Shell gas station has always been spotless. It really looks great. If I go up a little further, I can see Saber's Bank. Some of the displays they've had there have been phenomenal. And Sarkisian Capital Siding, just drove by there today, it looks fantastic. I'm not saying that those should be the ones, there are many more. But these are examples of positive imagery. I know when I was used to working western full-time, that I would choose not to drive down Southridge Street. I would drive over Packard Truck Hill, because it was much more positive going by, especially that one house we'd go to the golf course on the corner there. It's just absolutely gorgeous. And I don't know how they do it, but every year, they seem to be even better. But anyway, that's a suggestion, and again, thank you to the Auburn Water District.
Thank you, Mr. Plutukas.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, Mr. Bertham, yes.
If I could just say along those lines, that the Auburn Chamber of Commerce does have a best dressed application, or it's not really an application, but every year they give out best dressed awards. And maybe, in light of that, we should invite them to our meeting to announce who did the best dress, because it's right along those lines.
Thank you, Mr. Bertham. Moving on, is it 7:05? Yes. Yes, okay. We have a hearing for AMF Bowling Centers, Inc., a change of beneficial interest or transfer issuance of stock for a 7:05 hearing. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion of second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. So before you have the packet, this is some, this is a standard change of directors. It has no, oh, thanks. Welcome. If you want to give your name for the record, please.
It's Attorney Trish Farnsworth, on behalf of the applicant, AMF Bowling.
Yes. All righty, well, I'll let you speak to it.
It's a, well, there's five AMF Bowlings here in the Commonwealth. There's 295 of them in the U.S. And they're having at their parent level, a new investor come in, 65 percent. And because they hold an alcohol license, we need to come before you for that approval.
Do members have any questions?
Is there going to be, through the chair, is there going to be changes in our operation here, or?
No change in operation, or manager, or anything at all. It's just to disclose this beneficial interest.
Okay, and so it's, everybody's going to maintain their levels of tip certification and the operation of the?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Is there a motion regarding the application?
Make a motion that we approve the change of beneficial interest or transfer issuance of stock for the AMF.
Is there a second? There's still a liberty second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thanks so much for coming in.
Great, thanks for your time.
Thank you for being here.
The next item we have is the 99 Restaurant of Boston LLC. This is also a change of offices, directors. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. I don't believe we have a representative of this one here. The board doesn't require it if there isn't a change of the day-to-day operation. This is, again, change of beneficial interest. They have multiple locations, and this is something that they need to do before going, before the A, B, C, C. Do members have any comments or questions?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Is there a motion regarding the application?
Make a motion to approve the change of offices, directors for the 99 Restaurant of Boston LLC.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Moving on, we have an application from the Century Sportsman's Club, change of manager and new officer-director. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is open. Is there a representative who's going to speak to this?
Hi.
Okay, if you could come up to the microphone, please, or you can come up here, that's fine. If you could give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Alfred Auburn.
Have a seat, please.
My name is Alfred Auburn. I'm a board of director at the Century Sportsman's Club and representative of them tonight.
Okay. And can you tell us why you're before us tonight?
We're before you on this issue here for a change of manager, because the acting manager had stepped down.
Okay. And is the proposed manager with you tonight?
He is.
If he could come up, board members may have some questions. Please join us.
Nice to meet you again.
Too. If you could have a seat, please, and just give us your name for the record.
Thomas Brothers from Lester.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions regarding this tip certification or anything?
Yeah. Through the chair, I guess with a change of management and operation, is there going to be a change in your operation? Are you going to add more personnel? You going to change any of your policies?
Not at this time, no.
And I understand you have an alcohol license up there now at the bar, at the location on Rochelle Street?
That's correct.
And are all the people there tip-certified and have maintained that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
If I can just ask a couple of questions. How many people are tip-certified?
I'm going to say six or seven.
So there's always?
I think we gave you the list of them, didn't we?
Right, but we're having some changes, so we just want?
Putting myself, yes.
Yep. So there will always be someone on site who's tip-certified?
While the bar's open, yes.
Yes, yes. We're talking about deal or license, yeah. And you're very familiar with the conditions of your license? Have you read through the license conditions?
Yes.
The manager should be familiar with the license. Okay. Do board members have anything else? No. Is there a motion to?
Motion to close the hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is closed. Is there a motion regarding the application?
We'll make a motion, we approve the change of manager and new officer-director at the Century Sportsman's Club.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck with your new position. The other item isn't up yet.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. And the Fidelity Wellness Center, item D, has been postponed to September 11th. We have no communications. Under the Board of Selectmen, general items, we have a vote on maximum useful life of departmental equipment for borrowing purposes, and enclosed is the list. And Mr. Kasnovich, if you could just?
Sure, Madam Chair, members of the board. This relates to our bond sale that we sold $3.256 million for. Is part of the process, the board annually votes the useful life of the equipment to help structure our debt, in terms of debt and interest, because certain equipment we have to pay off within the first five years versus the term of the, term of the bond issue, which is 10 years. So there are two items before you, a total of $50,000, one for auditorium curtain with a disclosed maximum useful life of 10 years, as well as the phone system upgrade, 10 years as well. So your vote would satisfy this requirement that is determined by bond council.
Do members have any questions?
Yes.
Mr. Holstrom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The auditorium curtain and the phone system upgrade, are these the systems that are in place now, or are they going to be upgraded?
They are going to be upgraded.
They are going to be upgraded. Now, how old are these systems now, or how old is the phone system now?
I believe it's about 15 years old.
Okay, so it was the system before the new school went in?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And the auditorium curtain, that was put in at the time the school was built?
Right, which would have been 2004.
Okay.
All right. With an opening in 2006, so we're talking over 10 years.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion? The language should be used in the recommended motion.
Make a motion that the maximum useful life of departmental equipment to be financed with proceeds of the $50,000 borrowing authorized by vote of the town passed May 2nd, 2017, Article 4, is hereby determined pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 44, Paragraph 7, Section 1, to be as presented on the list as attached, as provided by the treasurer collector.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous vote. The next item is to approve votes and sign notes relative to the September 5th issuance date for $3,256,000 bond issue. And this, the vote of the Board of Selectmen, which you see is 5B, needs to be read out loud up to the point of page three where it says, "I further certify." Is there a board member who wants to read that?
I'm just going to get it here in front. Is it in the packet?
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
You've got to read all the way to page three.
Okay. Bear with me. "I, the clerk of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Auburn, Massachusetts, the town, certified that a meeting of the board held August 21st, 2017, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified, and at which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear on the official record of the board in my custody." That's what we want to do? We want to do all of that?
Yep, we've got to read it all.
All right. "Voted that we hereby determine in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 70B, that the amount of the cost of the new middle school construction project authorized by a vote of the town passed on May 7th, 2013, by Article 17, not being paid by the school facilities grant, is $23,795,235, and we hereby approve the issuance of the notes and bonds in such amount under said General Laws, Chapter 70B. Further voted that the maximum useful life of departmental equipment listed below to be financed with the proceeds of the $50,000 borrowing authorized by the vote of the town passed May 2nd, 2017, under Article 4, for the high school auditorium curtain and phone system is hereby determined pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Paragraph 7, Section 1, to be 10 years. Further voted that the sale of the $3,256,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2017, bonds of the town dated September 5th, 2017, noted as the bonds, to Robert W. Bearden &amp; Co. Incorporated at the price of $3,506,016.92, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond shall be payable on September 1st of the year's and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. Under year 2018, the amount will be $316,000, a 3% rate. 2019, it'd be $310,000 at a 3% rate. The year 2020, $305,000 at a 2% rate. The year 2021, $300,000 at a 5% rate. The year 2022, $250,000 at a 5% rate. 2023, $245,000 at a 5% rate. The year 2024, $245,000 at a 5% rate. In 2025, $245,000 at a 2% rate. 2026, $245,000 at a 2% rate. The year 2027, $195,000 at a 2% rate. In 2029, $240,000 at a 3% rate. And 2032, at $360,000 at a 3% rate. Further voted that the bonds maturing on September 1st, 2029, and September 1st, 2032, each a term bond, shall be subject to mandatory redemption or mature as follows. The term bond due September 1st, 2029. In the year 2028, it's $120,000. In 2029, it'll be $120,000. The term bond due September 1st, 2032. In the year 2030, it'll be $120,000. The year 2031, $120,000. And in the year 2032, $120,000. Further voted to approve the sale of the $1,950,666, 1.24% general obligation bond anticipation notes of the town dated September 15th, 2017, payable September 14th, 2018, noted as the notes, to TD Bank at par, plus accrued interest, if any. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated August 2nd, 2017, and a final official statement dated August 14th, 2017, the official statement, each in such form that may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the bond shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon terms and conditions that are set forth in the official statement. Further voted that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with the SEC Rule 15C-2-12 in such forms as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds, for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures, in such form as the treasurer and bond council deems sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures, in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the bonds and notes. Further voted that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry in to effect revisions of the foregoing votes.
Thank you, Mr. Holstrom. Well done. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Bertham, I am going to invite Ms. Grimo and Ms. Murphy up, who needs to witness the Board of Selectmen's signatures. And while they're making their way up, I'm going to ask Mr. Kasnovich to give us a brief summary as to what Mr. Holstrom just read.
I'm exhausted after that reading, Mr. Holstrom.
Tried to keep you awake.
Anyway, to summarize the language that was just made in the form of a motion, this has to do with our bond sale with these, that's dated September 5th. A series of notes will be signed by the board members relative to the issuance of $3.256 million. The school portion of that issue is about $1.8 million for the Auburn Middle School, has a 25-year purpose. And the remaining balance, $1,456,000, is a 10-year purpose, which is our FY '17 and FY '18 capital, as approved under Article 4 at the annual town meeting every year. The bids were received by the town through our financial advisor on 8/14, August 14th. The bid was awarded to Robert W. Bearden &amp; Co. Inc., with a total interest cost of And the rate was based upon our rating review by Standard &amp; Poor's. We went through an extensive rating review, which we have to go through annually when we go out and borrow money. I'm happy to say we maintained our AA+ rating through Standard &amp; Poor's, which has given us quite a good interest rate as a result of that rating.
Well done. Thank you.
So that's a summary of what you're being asked to do tonight. These bonds will be signed and we'll be receiving proceeds on September 5th.
Great. Are there any board questions? Seeing none, if we could move on to the, oh, is, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. We can move on to the signatures. Thank you. And just clear your desk, guys. And pass down quite a few. This is this A. Oh, that's a.
This is the second one right there. I just wanted to show that. Unfortunately, they're kind of different.
Oh, really? Nope, sorry. It's attached?
I saw it once, sorry.
Okay. Just the front page of this.
Just the front page.
And this one is right here. Here, right here. These are the actual bonds themselves. And this has to be done live and on camera. Just one on that one. This is the litigation official statement. Sorry. There you go. Here you go. The next one is the tax certificate. It's a tax certificate. This is the continuing disclosure. This is the continuing disclosure.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's it? Thank you.
That's the one we're looking for?
Moving on, the next agenda item is a one-day beer and wine license for two days. Century Sportsman's Club, 351 Rochdale Street. And enclosed is your, actually not enclosed in your packet, I believe everyone received this notice today, dated today, August 21st. To whom it may concern, the Century Sportsman's Club Board of Directors has decided to withdraw the application submitted for the outdoor alcohol sales for the weekend of August 26th and 27th, 2017, and it's signed by the authorized representative, Alfred Auburn. So no action will be taken on the one-day beer and wine license for August 26th and 27th. The next item we have is an?
Madam Chair, may I ask, on this particular thing, it says, "The Century Sportsman's Club will not be serving any alcohol whatsoever at any time on both days of August 26th and 27th." Does that mean inside as well as outside?
That's my understanding. And we have another agenda item, that I think we can address that.
Okay, thank you.
But because they're withdrawing their license, this is just, they're only required to have a one-day beer and wine license for outdoors. They currently hold an all-alcohol beverage license, so this was just for the outdoor service of beer and wine. And if there are questions about any alcohol to be served at that time, we can, we can discuss that under the outdoor entertainment license.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, moving on, the next item we have is an outdoor To my concern, the Century Sportsman's Club Board of Directors has decided to withdraw the application submitted for the outdoor alcohol sales for the weekend of August 26th and 27th, 2017, and it's signed by the authorized representative Alfred Orbin. So, no action will be taken on the one-day beer and wine license for August 26th and 27th. The next item we have is an.
Madam Chair, may I ask, on this particular thing, it says the Century Sportsman's Club will not be serving any alcohol whatsoever at any time on both days of August 26th and 27th. Does that mean inside as well as outside?
That's my understanding. And we have another agenda item that I think we can address that.
Okay. Thank you.
But because they're withdrawing their license, this is just, they're only required to have a one-day beer and wine license for outdoors. They currently hold an all-alcohol beverage license, so this was just for the outdoor service of beer and wine. And if there are questions about any alcohol to be served at that time, we can discuss that under the outdoor entertainment license.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, moving on, the next item we have is an outdoor entertainment license for Century Sportsman's Club for music at 531 Rochdale Street for August 26th and August 27th, and it says from 1:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. I'm going to ask Lieutenant Lemon and Mrs. Coyle to come up and join us for this, please. So, as board members, I'm sure are aware, this application has evolved since it was first presented to us. In your packet, you have an application that went before the DCG, and I can let board members know tonight that I had met with Mr. Kasnovich, Lieutenant Lemon, and Ms. Coyle prior to tonight's meeting, and Ms. Coyle can address this if board members need to. But what was presented at the DCG meeting is not what appears that this will be, and so Ms. Coyle has asked that they withdraw any approval from the DCG because it was based on the application that was submitted, which is now not was the intention of the Sportsman's Club. So, I'm not sure how board members want to move forward. We can hold this, we can ask them to look at another date until they can get all of their licenses. We can hear from Lieutenant Lemon and Ms. Coyle. Certainly, the information that we've been getting over the last few days has evolved and has given us some concern because it's not, wasn't presented in the way that we normally do when you apply for a license. All the information is included in the application. It goes to DCG. DCG meets and makes recommendations based on what was submitted. This was submitted back in July, and as of today, the events of this proposed event are changing. Mr. Holstrom.
Madam Chair, I would like to have Mrs. Coyle and Lieutenant Lemon give us their comments, a little bit of background on what has been discussed as compared to the notes that you've just given us.
Okay.
Please.
So, I'm going to start with Mrs. Coyle because the first application went to DCG. So, if you can just address the issue of what was presented to DCG and then what you have learned it to be.
Sure. Good evening. So, the DCG met with representatives from the Century Sportsman's Club on August 2nd, and the representatives that were at that meeting were Mr. Orbin, Alfred Orbin, and Tom Brothers. They had presented to DCG for the two one-day beer and wine licenses and an outdoor entertainment license. At that time, the information that was given to the board members was that it was a two-day fundraising event that was going to have bands. The actual club itself was going to be closed to the public except for the sale of food and for restrooms. The main event was going to be outside. There was going to be a tent involved. We asked about, or the discussion was how trash was going to be handled, how portable toilets, the number and location of where the toilets were going to be, parking, because they were expecting approximately about 500 people for this event, and various things revolving a large crowd at a two-day event. So, that discussion revolved around the fundraising. DCG did discuss emergency access in vehicles, how first responders would be able to get to the site should there be an event that caused an emergency. So, all of those things were discussed at the meeting. Advisement was given to the representatives for the licensing, and at that time, the DCG did not have problems with moving forward with recommending that to the Board of Selectmen with conditions. And I believe that you have a copy of the DCG memo in your packets. So, the hours for serving beer and wine were going to be from 1:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on both days. The hours for outdoor entertainment were going to be from 1:00 to 9:30 on both days. The applicant would need to get all necessary permits from all applicable boards and commissions, and most notably, from the Board of Health and the Building Department. Board of Health was going to be issuing permits for, at minimum, the portable toilet. The Building Department was going to be issuing a tent permit, and if there was going to be any other food provided, a food permit would be issued, but it was told to us at that time that Century Sportsman's Club would be providing all of the food for the event. They would have also their own security team and parking attendants that would handle the crowds. The staff had to be serve-safe and Alogent certified, and I believe that came up because there was somebody in the process of trying to get those certifications up to date, and so that was identified. The beach, because we do give a beach permit to the Century Sportsman's Club, there was a concern with that many people, and obviously, outdoor alcohol permit, we wanted to make sure that steps were taken to make sure that people weren't swimming, so that was going to be posted as the beach would not be open for the public, and there would be steps taken to make the beach not accessible. The driveway had to remain clear for emergency vehicles and first responder, access to all the parking areas and lots, and the applicant would need to contact the police for police details and traffic management as determined by the police. As with any large crowd, we always refer to the police as to what they need. So, that is the information that was presented to us at that time, and those were the recommendations that were given.
Thank you. And regarding the entertainment license, I just, I'm not sure I correct whether you said it or not. When they came before DCG, was it their intention to have outdoor music or indoor and outdoor music?
No. It was identified to DCG that the building would not have, would not be open to the public except to sell food and for the use of restrooms. That was specifically identified, so the bands were to be outside.
Okay. Thank you so much. So, on the application, you can see that they have requested hours of operation from August 26th from 1:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and August 27th from 1:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And I'm now going to ask Lieutenant Lemon to give us an update on what you have learned about ticket sales and hours of operation as recently as today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, last week, I had the assignment of being acting chief and to receive this particular information from DCG and from the town manager's office to look into this and to make some recommendations. So, one of the first things I did, not knowing a whole lot about it, was I reviewed the document and the memorandum that was sent over from DCG to look and see what the event was all about, and I looked at the actual application, and there really wasn't a whole lot of information for you to make a competent decision. So, I learned later on in the week that this event involved several bands that would be playing throughout the day, and I discussed it with the town manager, Julie Jacobson, and Mr. Kasnovich. At some point later on in the day, the town manager contacted me, and she had done something as simply as Google Century Sportsman's Club reggae bands, because that was what I initially learned, and there were several websites that came up advertising this particular event as a fundraiser, the ASM or the Ashley Sheehan Memorial Jam Fest that was going to be held at Century Sportsman's Club. So, within the publications were of advertising this, and the advertisement flyers were the actual itineraries of the event that the Century Sportsman's Club was going to be having. So, I looked at some of the itineraries, and the itinerary listed tickets and ticket sales and how much they cost and what the hours of operation, and some of the advertisements, and even as recent as tonight at 4:30, when I printed it up, listed the event beginning on Saturday afternoon and ending Monday morning at 2:00 in the morning at the very latest. So, they were well outside the parameters of the application. So, not wanting to rush to judgment on that, I looked into it a little bit more, and I eventually tried contacting Mr. Brothers, who was listed as a co-applicant on the application for the permit, and eventually made contact with Fred Orbin. And Fred was great. He wanted to come down, he wanted to meet with us. I told him I had some concerns about this. We talked preliminarily about details and detail officers being present for public safety reasons. He told me he had already been in discussions with the fire department to make sure that there were EMS personnel and fire personnel present during the event. So, Mr. Orbin came in, he met with myself, Deputy Chief Johnson, and Captain Anderson from the fire department, and I pulled out a lot of the flyers and documents indicating the hours of operation and the bands that were performing and what was going, what type of event this was going to be. And, I mean, it made no bones about it as far as what was being advertised. It was being advertised as a cannabis event with various vendors and people teaching workshops, and there was a Q&amp;A portion on one of the advertisements, was smoking allowed, and the advertisement said absolutely yes. So, I told Mr. Orbin, for me, this is not about the marijuana, it's not, I'm not my concern specifically about that, but I would be remiss if I didn't say that if I didn't notice that it was a two-day alcohol event combined with the two days of this event surrounding cannabis, where cannabis and marijuana was going to be allowed to be smoked on premise. Private property, they were selling sales under an ounces legal, I understand all that. But I was certainly concerned about how they were going to manage that with it being an event involving alcohol for two days. I was concerned about the alcohol being combined with the drugs for two days, and I was extremely alarmed about the hours of operation that are being advertised. Now, again, I pointed out, we talked, so I talked to Mr. Orbin about this, and Mr. Orbin was very forthright with me, and he told me a lot of this was news to him, he was very surprised, this is the first he's seen of the information. He says he had some inkling that it was going to be a cannabis event, but it was going to be well-patrolled by his own staff and people. So, that's essentially how it, how I decided to take some action on this. We were, I thought that the application itself, for lack of a better term, was surreptitious at best, where the DCG really didn't know all the information, and I was a little bit alarmed that the Century Sportsman's Club, who was renting out to whomever they're renting to, didn't have all the information. So, that's why we met. Mr. Orbin eventually contacted me the next day and met with the town personnel, and that's essentially where I'm at. I have some publications here that I printed as recently as 4:30 this afternoon, if the members of the board would like to look through them. I made copies, it lists the.
You can give them to Sharon and Chappelle.
Sure. Yes. You don't have enough?
No, we have enough. I already, thank you.
Yes. Yes. Just tell them to just take one. You just give those to the board.
I'm not really sure. And I know these documents just came to board members tonight. As Lieutenant Lemon said, he just printed these off the website at 4:30 to give us the most up-to-date and accurate information. So, certainly, I'll give board members a couple minutes to review these and then move on to comments and questions so that everyone can focus on that.
I do have a bit more information. So, upon Chief Lucas's unexpected return today, he came back to attend a funeral service for a relative of the town manager. I had a chance to speak with him and tell him essentially what I've told you and about our meeting with Mr. Orbin, and Chief Lucas agreed to call Mr. Orbin. We discussed it at length. I showed him the letter and the retraction of the one-day beer and wine license, and the chief had said that, having reviewed this information, it was of his opinion that if the board was to approve their outdoor permit, that he was going to request a minimum of 10 police officers, but because they retracted that beer and wine license over the two-day period, that he would be willing to demand that a minimum of six police officers over the period of two days. And that's really where we are as far as the basics of the information.
Okay. Do members want a couple minutes to read this, or do you want to move on to questions? Does anyone need more time? Okay. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
I want you to vote to stay here. So, also, because I was concerned about ticket sales being sold before, tickets being sold before they even had an opportunity to come before the board and present that, see if there were any conditions, so I went online at 7:45, I'm sorry, 6:49 tonight, and tried to purchase a ticket and was able to, going all the way, but was able to purchase a ticket for Saturday from 1:00 p.m. until Monday at 1:00 a.m. So, my concern is, these tickets are being sold, and what happens if this board does approve this with limited, with the hours presented to the DCG, and I'll ask the applicant when they come forward, how we handle that. I mean, I would imagine they're going to have some very angry people who planned on staying all weekend, who have come from all over, who bought a ticket and now will not have a ticket. I'll also point out that in the paperwork that Lieutenant Lemon provided, they list bands playing, the bands play for an hour, and they have a band listed from 1:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. And also, it was presented to DCG that bands would, there would only be outdoor entertainment, and it's my understanding that they have stages set up indoors and outdoors. I just want board members to have all of this information when asking the questions, when reviewing the information, and making a determination whether we want to grant this license. As chairman, I would recommend that we hold this if they can reschedule this event and go through the process properly and provide DCG with all of the information so DCG can provide us with feedback, work with public safety officials and public health officials. But certainly, what was presented in the initial application is not what we're looking at for an event. Mr. Holstrom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A comment. I guess it's not our concern as a board about ticket sales. My concern for the board, for the best interests of the town and protection of the town and protection of the people that are going to be in attendance, if there's a problem with communication between our DCG and the Century Sportsman's Club, one hand doesn't know what the other hand is doing, they're presenting this, advertising it, going online saying, "This is what we're doing," and not giving the same information, I'm very uncomfortable with giving this outdoor entertainment and even with the alcohol was even presented to us. I'd have a very, very difficult time doing that because what they're telling the general public on sales of tickets and what the town understands as far as our portion of it, as far as public safety, as securities, I have a very, very difficult time supporting any of this. I think your statement coming back saying that if they want to come back to us at another time, resubmit the application and get all the boards, all the committees.
I have a question or a couple of questions.
Certainly. Mr. Capenter.
In relation to ticket sales, how many people were they anticipating being at this event? Now, this is in a, on a narrow road in a rural part of town surrounded by neighborhoods.
It's my, it's my understanding, Mr. Capenter, from looking, from talking with Mr. Auburn, looking at the actual application that they filed, I think they filed it back on, it was dated July 19th, that there was a 500-person capacity. And those were some of the issues that I took under consideration in the interest of public safety, to our citizens, to the attendees and to the police officers that would be present at this particular event.
So in your professional opinion, 500 people in this compact of an area with access being as limited and constrained as it is, is that a realistic amount of people to be in that site for you to control?
Well, I have to be very forthright, I don't think that the Century Sportsman's Club, I've been a policeman on air for a long time, it's a very vast and expansive rural area. The concern that we had was just that, that it was on the outside parameters of town near the Oxford Leicester line, that there's limited access to it as far as the police department goes. We wanted to make sure that there were enough police officers present so they had adequate backup and assistance should there be any problems up there or any disturbances. So as far as the actual venue itself, they have a lot of acreage, I'm not sure what the entire landmass is, but it's good size. And they seem to have a decent parking plan and that they've presented. The problem that I had with it was none of this information was brought to our attention until the 11th hour. And I, I give Mr. Auburn and the members of the board a lot of credit, they said they were unaware of what the renter was actually trying to do, but I find that problematic. I mean, they're the ones who are charging the rent and we had some, some significant public safety things to consider. That's, that's my, that's my lane that I have to worry about. The Deputy Fire Chief, he and the Captain and Chief Coleman were dealing with the EMS side of it. Excuse me, it wasn't my voice. But if that answers your question or if that's helpful.
It, it does. My concern is, yes, they can physically move around the property, getting to the property, 500 cars on those roadways, to me, just putting on my old hat as a planning board member, 500 cars on that road to get to an event like this is far too many for that road to handle and for those residents to have to accommodate themselves to for two days. I mean, that's a tremendous amount, obviously they're not arriving all at once, I understand that, but to me, just knowing that area of town, it's, and to have an outdoor concert, to me, I wouldn't be in favor of having music outdoors because of your location. You, you're in the middle of a residential neighborhood which is rural in nature, but nonetheless, you're impacting not only our friends in Oxford, but also Auburn residents for an extended period of time. So, for me to support any type of an event such as this, there would definitely have to be a compaction of hours. And it'd have to be, for me, 500 people is just too much for that roadway.
Mr. Bertham?
Just go on record saying that there's no way that I would support this tonight. I would certainly be willing to hear more at a different date. As Mr. Capenter said, maybe, you know, less hours, less people, making sure that the DCG is comfortable with what they're hearing, making sure that the police and fire are comfortable with what they're hearing, but right now, there's just, my head's spinning just in the information I've received in the last three days. And it's changed every day in the last three days. So, and the more it seems we get online, it changes by the hour. So, I personally will not support this tonight, but I'm not saying that, you know, I'm against a memorial fundraiser, I'm not against a jam fest, you know, certain, you know, bands playing, whatever, but there's just too much right now. And this should have been brought to our attention, or the DCG's attention, probably two or three months ago so that these things could have been ironed out. Thank you.
Mr. Liberty and then Mr. Holstrom.
I just want to point out to the board that I'm looking at the Facebook page now for the event and as of right now, it's still advertised for August 26th at 1:00 PM to August 27th at 12:00 AM. So, that even past 4:30 today, it's still being advertised that, so I just wanted to point that out to everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Holstrom?
I make a motion, we deny the license.
I second that.
Just under discussion, I have another question for Lieutenant Lemon. On one of the documents that you provided to us that was printed off this afternoon at 1:30, I know they were through the beer and wine license, but if an event is advertised as a 21-plus event, would a person buying a ticket believe that an over 21 event would include alcohol?
That would only be my opinion, but that would be my personal opinion, that it would be, alcohol would be available, that's correct.
And, and this was on, still on the website at 4:30 this evening?
Correct.
So someone purchasing a ticket would, would believe that this is a 21-plus event?
It's printed right on there, it says it's over 21, absolutely, it's in black and white.
So, just because you're the applicant of, if anyone wants to say anything, there's a motion to deny and ask that you, you know, either speak to the promoter and see if something can be done. If you can go up to the other microphone just so we can hear you, please.
Yes, thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the Selectmen Board and Lieutenant Lemon and all the other town officials, sorry, I don't remember all your names. I would just first like to state that the Century Sportsman's Club came to the town of Auburn because we had a renter approach us to do a memorial benefit. That memorial benefit has not changed. They came to us and asked us to have two-day band playing from noon to 9:30 to be over at 10:00 o'clock. We, as the board of directors, decided that that would be a good option. We're a self-funded club, we rely on our rentals to pay our taxes, to help with all of our utilities and upgrades and our conservation efforts, which include Cub Scout, Boy Scout, campouts, conservation camps that we send kids to each year, we donate to different funds in the town for the Fire and Police Association, and we also try to help our neighbors and our community members as much as possible. And that being said, when I first came to the advisory board, it was a limited crowd of advisors, not all who are speaking tonight were in attendance. It was addressed to them then that there would be a benefit of 500 people, there'd be 13 bands playing two days and that after the bands were done, they were done. The renter interpreted the rental of our property to include all access, so they took it upon themselves to make these internet posts. I was told that I needed to apply, that the club needed to apply for permits for tents, for porter parties, to get the licensing updates for the change of our offices, which we did have current, and we still do have current licenses for serve safe choke hazard. Our club has elections every year and those people change, so sometimes these things change and those licenses have to be changed over to other hands. The point I'm trying to make is this, is that at no time has anything changed except for the influence of marijuana on this festival memorial. I hear, I have here right now the original post that was made by the renter and I can give this to the board to consider, which states that they did a memorial last year, soon to be husband and wife, fiancés, they raised some money, it was unofficial, but they donated what they made to the Worcester County Food Bank and to the, I believe it's an opioid crisis epidemic clinic as well of some sort. In either which case, the two people who did this event were in a bad car accident. The woman was killed, her fiance was left with their now four-year-old daughter and he's trying to continue on what they had started together because she was passionate about helping people with problems. She worked in a local food pantry, soup kitchen, and that's what he came to us with. As the members of the club, we asked questions, what is this going to entail? What kind of bands are going to be there? He said it's going to be reggae themed. I brought this information to the board of advisors, I told them what it was going to be and a couple of comments were made, oh, there'll probably be marijuana use, yes, I'm sure there will be. I mean, the state laws have changed, this is uncharted waters for us, it's uncharted for a lot of us. But the fact remains that we still rely on rentals for our property to pay our bills. And the amount that the renter was offering for our property was a very worthwhile venture for us. After learning some of the concerns, speaking with Lieutenant Lemon, as he stated, everything he said was true, we did not have the complete understanding of what their event was. So when I left Lieutenant Lemon, I went to the town hall and I filed for the permits for the tents and the porter parties and we got them filed into the office. And then I was approached by, I'm sorry with names again, one of the officials, actually several of the officials and the town manager, I presume, to discuss the matters because things have changed. I stated then, again, the Century Sportsman's Club is renting our facility from noon to 10:00 PM. The, the renter has a ticket thing going on where he gets his ticket revenue and he has sponsors for the event that helps raise money. I, after speaking with the advisory committee again, they had told me that they needed some things addressed and I outlined them in the letter that I submitted today. And we made those immediate changes and addressed all the issues. I contacted the vendor immediately after leaving the advisory committee and told him that at no way, anytime was he authorized by the Century Sportsman's Club to advertise such events and that it was not appropriate and it needed to come down or his rental would be discontinued and we would have to go and seek another route. He immediately said he would comply with all requests, including police details, which the number has grown, which obviously would hurt the benefit of their cause if that cost was incurred. So, after doing so, he made several changes and emailed translations to myself, which I made copies of, which removed all of the things that were concerned and made letters of statements addressing to their sponsors that at no time were they able to try to circumvent any Massachusetts laws in regards to cannabis. But let me please just state this, it's obvious that the, the real complexity of this was that there was marijuana and alcohol being combined. The club offices and myself take that very seriously and we do not condone in any way, shape or form the use of alcohol, drugs, illegal or legal at any time while in the use of firearms, hunting, sporting activities or as in general public as not permitted by law. So, that being said, we've made that all clear to them and we had an emergency board meeting and we decided that because we had already made the agreement with the renter and had received full payment for their rental, that we would approach this in a different way to protect ourselves and the club. And that was to remove the element of alcohol. And I could cite case studies, I'm not a lawyer and I'm not any statistics expert, but I can Google search and you could on your phone, there are very limited instances of any issues with marijuana. Personally, I have my own views and I'm sure we all do. But again, I'm here as a representative of the club and what's best for our club and that is to try to keep ourselves afloat. These renters have made every provision requested to them that was requested through the advisory board. We have changed nothing in our application for permit for outside entertainment. The bands are going to be in the locations that were provided on the maps that have been inspected by the Fire Chief and the Fire Captain. The building inspector, the board of health gave their concerns, we addressed the issues and we made good with their requests. I, as a, as a leader and member of this club, see this as more of a, a personal issue as the conflict of the two things and the issue of marijuana. Marijuana is definitely going to be an issue in the next years with all of us. I'm sure it's not going to be long, you're going to see it on your store shelves, not that any of us are looking forward to it, but there are liquor stores, I'm sure there'll be marijuana stores. And rumor has it, there's probably some of that trying to go on in this town now, but regardless of the point, last week in Spencer, there was a marijuana festival, okay? It wasn't highly advertised, but it was done on the Spencer, Town of Spencer's property at the Spencer Fairgrounds and they had one police detail with double the attendance, okay, and zero instances. And in regards to the safety, that was the biggest concern. And before we were ever requested to have a police detail, we had already said we would want two emergency details. We secured them prior to the police details and we, in discussion, and then secured both police details at the time requested after Officer Lemon and I spoke, was four details were secured that day before I left the police department, two details at the fire station and then all the permits filed here at the town hall. We have 50 acres with over a mile of road on our 50 acres. Rochdale Street has more traffic than probably Stafford Street, okay? There are thousands of cars that travel Rochdale Street every day and I can understand and appreciate the concerns you have for that. But, we have a mile of road and we have had events such as fishing derbies that have attendance of almost 500 themselves, of just guys fishing on our pond and parking everywhere and anywhere they could without us making these provisions. So our property is more than adequate to handle the 500 people, okay? We have a building permit that allows us to have 210 people. We have weddings and functions all the time that get up to that capacity and never require any type of detailing. And of course, they don't have this, this last-minute details of change, but again, the change has not changed. The only change is that the advertisement was done without the permission of Century Sportsman's Club. So, the event is still a memorial event, I have a breakdown here of where the proceeds go and how they, how they are handled. And the Century Sportsman's Club would like to request, after speaking with Chief Lucas today, myself, he requested six details. Six details is a lot of offices for 500 people. And I will reference the local Sheldon's permit they received for their outdoor entertainment. Halligan's Bar has had these for outdoor alcohol, alcohol entertainment licenses as well, well over 300 people and I haven't seen details there. So, I think we need to really look at what's fair and what's coming down the road to us and how we need to handle it. Because this isn't the first time this is, has been brought to us, it's just the first time that it's been a legal way to go about something. And we, as the board of directors, want to stay in the good graces of this town and with our, our, our fire and police officials so that we can work together to try to help make our club better, make the community better and bring profit and revenue to this town from any attendees at any of our events at any time. So I would ask that, that the board of selectmen, please reconsider this. today, myself, he requested six details. Six details is a lot of offices for 500 people. And I will reference the local Sheldon's permit they received for their outdoor entertainment. Halligan's Bar has had these for outdoor alcohol entertainment licenses as well. Well over 300 people, and I haven't seen details there. So, I think we need to really look at what's fair and what's coming down the road to us and how we need to handle it. Because this isn't the first time this has been brought to us, it's just the first time that it's been a legal way to go about something. And we, as the board of directors, want to stay in the good graces of this town and with our fire and police officials so that we can work together to try to help make our club better, make the community better, and bring profit and revenue to this town from any attendees at any of our events at any time. So I would ask that the board of selectmen please reconsider this and understand that we will comply with all local, state, and federal laws, okay? We have no intentions to circumvent any of that. Everything that you may see on the website, I already caught again this morning, asked him why it changed. What you're seeing is hours that he took off. There was a concern that we were going to have an after-hour party. At 10 o'clock, 500 people have to leave. There's no after-hour party. There is no bar open, and that's why we said we would make it an alcohol-free event. Because we understand the severity of what the two of these elements combined could cause. So, again, we would just like to ask that you would consider these facts, and if there's any other concerns, I could address them to you now. But we feel we are prepared and able to handle the situation, and we feel that we would definitely like the assistance of the Auburn Police to be there. We just feel that six officers is a little bit much for what this may be, maybe a knee-jerk for what the actual conditions of it is. So, I would take under advisement any other offerings, and obviously, but again, we're a private organization. I mean, we do things at our club that go through all the time, that, and in the past, it's been no hidden secret, you know? We've had fundraisers there, we've never seek permits for, they were for club members. We've had bands in the parking lot. I've been to my next-door neighbor's house who's had a band in his job, okay? I don't know how to handle this in a forward approach, but right now, we would like to try to do this in a legal approach, and that's why we want the permit. I mean, we could seek alternate avenues of this as private landowners, but we don't want to. And if you tell us tonight that we can't, then we won't. We will not have a band play outside, and we still will not serve alcohol all weekend, not even if the event's there or not. But the fact being is this, this is a new avenue that we're all going to have to go down, and this board especially. Club members and sportsmen and gun owners across America have different opinions about what the laws are going to be with the marijuana changes. This state's already chosen what it is and how that works with this. We're not trying to represent in any way, shape, or form a marijuana festival, at all. We are just a renter renting our facility, trying to pay our bills, and keeping the good graces of the town of Auburn.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor in a second for, to deny the license. We're still under discussion on the motion. So I just want to comment on a couple things you say. I can speak for myself, and I'm sure other board members will want to speak for themselves as well. This isn't about marijuana for me. This is about an outdoor entertainment license that's before the board that, as far as I'm concerned, has many issues. It is a remote area, as you said, it's 50 acres, but it abuts a neighborhood. My concern is that tickets have already been sold. Whether the concern should be mine or not, it is. Because I have a concern that VIP tickets were sold for an event till 2:00 a.m. I don't want six Auburn police officers to be trying to clear an area at 10:00 p.m. when people believe that they have a ticket, that they're going to listen to music till 2:00 a.m. I've attended weddings, I've been to your club, it's a lovely club, and I hope that you can, you know, promote it and make people aware that the venue is available for residents. But I'll state again, this isn't about the marijuana, it's about the process, what was presented to DCG, what has happened. You can't unring a bell when you've told someone that they can stay until 2:00 a.m. and now you try to send them home at 10:00 p.m. after they've paid $99 for a ticket to be there until 2:00 a.m. for two days. I'm concerned that our Auburn police officers, yes, may have a hard time clearing that area.
If I may address you, Ms. Chairman, that is correct. But if you read the ticket disclaimer on the tickets themselves, they say that the times of the venue and the theme of the venue can change at their discretion. So, they, because that was asked by me, what are these people going to do when we have to, when we tell them to leave and they say, hey, my ticket says I'm here all weekend? It says right on their ticket. It's at their discretion to end it when they like. So, that's in the details of how the ticketing works. I have no idea, but that was a question I did ask, and it is a very good question, a valid question, but I think they covered that.
I'll just, I'll just say that. How many of us have gone home with a ticket, be it to a concert, to a New England Patriots game, to parking a car in the garage and flipped it over and looked at the liability that they are indemnified from? So, I appreciate your comments and the fact that it says that on the back of the ticket things can change, but if you've just, I stand by my feeling that if you've just purchased a ticket for $99, it says absolutely no refunds, absolutely no refunds, I think that you're going to have a frustrated and angry group of 500 people. Again, this is only about the outdoor entertainment for me, my concerns for public safety, my concerns for the neighborhood, and my concerns for people who may come from all over the state who now plan on camping out in Auburn for the night.
If I could address that too.
Just one moment, please. I'll let you address it, but I'm first going to, I just wanted to make one other point that you brought up about having other bands there, and I will just move forward with this, shall we say. But when I asked about your new bar manager reading all the conditions of your liquor license, your liquor license clearly says, and I think there's about maybe 60 bullets on a liquor license, your liquor license clearly says that you need an entertainment license for any entertainment. So I know you just said we've had bands and we haven't had a problem. I haven't seen you before this board, so let's not go down that road until we read our license and see what you need.
I think that may be a gray area and concern, but we will definitely review that and gladly review with you as well.
And we don't have, we don't necessarily, you know, depending on timeframes, doing things right, but you must come before this board for any and all entertainment licenses if you have an all-alcohol license. First, Mr. Holstrom, then Mr. Berthew. Mr. Holstrom, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess what I'm going to do is I'm going to echo our chairman's comments about the marijuana, that marijuana is an aside. We all have our opinions, you're absolutely right. The problem I'm having is the communication between the parties. What the DCG has heard, what you had heard, you didn't quite understand, and now your renter is saying one other thing. Well, you're telling us tonight that, yeah, it's all taken care of, it's all well and good. Well, how are we all supposed to know that? The DCG should understand that and have it right in front of them saying, bang, 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 all the way down, and we're not hearing that tonight.
I addressed those in the written statement that we submitted today, all the concerns from the DCG.
Okay. That was in a statement today, has the DCG, I guess I'm going to through the chair, has the DCG met and reviewed all of these marks that he had mentioned tonight.
So that same letter that Mr. Auburn brought to the town today, no, it has not been reviewed by DCG, DCG was not scheduled for today. To be clear, I did meet with Mr. Auburn on Friday in an impromptu meeting. So after he had met with the police and fire departments, the police and fire departments notified me of that meeting, expressed the discussion that they had, and identified to me the steps that they were taking, and they were supposed to be moving forward with the paperwork. Up to that point, I can tell you, from the DCG meeting to approximately maybe mid-time last week, we were not aware of all the other items that I had discussed with Mr. Auburn on Friday. So we went through several issues, and I requested from him a written response to all the issues that were brought up at that meeting on Friday, this past Friday, and so that's why you have a letter before you. So several concerns. I think that this kind of came about because the police department had observed that there were other things going on at this festival that, outside of the scope of what was presented to DCG. So the times, what was being offered, you know, entertainment inside, different things that we weren't aware of. So since that time, again, about mid-last week, each day there has been something different that frankly was brought up. So I will identify to you, we have not, DCG is not scheduled to meet, I would have to check our calendar, but there's not going to be a DCG meeting from now until the event, which is scheduled for this weekend.
Thank you.
Mr. Berthew.
I just want, I want to start by saying I appreciate Century Sportsman's Club, all of you guys being here. And at no time have I thought that you guys haven't tried to do your due diligence with this whole event. So, I'm not holding any judgment on Century Sportsman's Club. I would have done the same thing and everything that you have done. It's not about marijuana, it's about, you know, looking at the number of bands, it's about, you know, going online and seeing basically the vendors that are going to be there, set up tables and everything else. It is, you know, I also appreciate the person that is running the Ashby Sheen Memorial, what they're looking to do, what they're doing with their funds. I have no problem with any of that. The problem is that it's he said, she said, I said, they said, he told me, I'm referring it to you, I put it in writing, but there's no boom, 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 like Mr. Holstrom said, okay? It's changing too much. I can't support, in my mind, I can't support it because I don't, I don't have a good understanding of really what's going to happen. You can stand up there right now, and I appreciate that, and say it's not changed from the beginning, it's a 500-person event, there's going to be bands playing, and that's it. People are going to be enjoying the bands, smoking a little weed. I don't care about that, okay? What I care about is that there's a lot more that I've read, there's a lot more that I've heard, there's a lot more that I've seen, that I continue to see that changes and changes and changes. I cannot support this event at the time that you want to have it. Again, not, I'm not opposed to, you know, somebody putting a better game plan together. I mean, I don't know if we're allowed to have the renter here to, you know, see contracts so that, you know, that they stipulate that absolutely everyone has been informed that they're going to leave at 10 o'clock. But I'm not seeing any of that, and I still cannot support it. And I do appreciate everything Century Sportsman's Club does. I do appreciate the ideal that the fundraiser is supposed to do, but it's gone, it's going way too wrong as far as the whole setup of it. Thank you.
Mr. Carpenter.
Chair, through you to Mr. Auburn. You're going to have eight members of your club as a security detail.
Correct.
And we have six Auburn police officers. You're not allowing cannabis on your property, correct? That's your statement today? You're not, so if you see somebody...
We have stated that nothing that is illegal allowed on our property. If it is legal, then we're not going to stop people from doing something that's legal.
Okay, so I have a follow-up. If you see somebody, you're not providing alcohol.
If we seen someone with alcohol, because it's an alcohol-free event, they would be asked to leave immediately.
Okay. Those are two things that are a concern to me. We have 500 people, you have at best 14 people trying to manage 500 individuals. I think, for me, I don't know how this became about cannabis, I don't, I heard from the town manager that it was being offered, but that's my concern, as you've mentioned others. I've never given an outdoor entertainment license since I've been on the board to Halligan's. But I was very concerned about how Sheldon operated, and we had multiple calls. So, I'm not going to say prior boards were incorrect or wrong, I'm just going to tell you as an elected board member and as someone who dealt with planning for many years, there may be thousands of cars on that road over a 24-hour period. You're sending 500 new cars at God knows if they're going to be there at the beginning, God knows what they're going to do at the end. But we don't know if they've taken drugs before they got there, we don't know if they're ingesting drugs while they're there, you may do all the best that you can. But my concern is, A, we have six police officers, which I understand you think is overkill. I think personally, if I were one of those six police officers, I don't know that I'd be volunteering to go to this event, no matter how much you paid me. Because six people versus 500 is not good odds. And with eight people in your security detail, what experience do they have in dealing with people who might get rowdy, who might be under the influence of illegal or legal substances? And what liability are they taking on, or we taking on as a town by giving you a license knowing that you have eight people who, we have no idea, are they former policemen, are they former sheriffs, are they just, you know, eight members who are willing to put themselves on the line, which is great?
I can answer that if you like.
You know, to me, it is a safety issue, and it's also a traffic issue. It's not a cannabis issue, it's not a, I'm worried about them mixing alcohol and cannabis. Because we have state laws that say if you're driving under the influence, you're going to lose your license. So we have laws, whether it's legal or it isn't, once you pass the line of sobriety, you're going to deal with the result. My concern is we have a very congested rural part of our community dealing with outdoor bands, which I'm not in favor of. I'm not in favor of somebody having to listen for 10 hours to somebody's band. I just don't think any resident, whether they're in Auburn or they're in Oxford, should have to take a whole weekend and rent a hotel room so they can get some peace. This is their home, they should be able to enjoy their home, as you should be able to enjoy your hunting and whatever activities that the Century Sportsman's Club has. But for me, it's all about safety. I don't know why it's suddenly, constantly, the people are telling me why I'm opposed to something, because if I was opposed on the basis of what you're saying, I would have the fortitude to tell you that I have a problem with who you're renting to. Okay? That's not the case. So it's not about what you're doing, what the intent of this individual is doing, it's about how do we safely protect the residents of our community, as well as the people who are going to this event? And at this time, I'm going to join my other colleagues and say, no, I'm not going to change my mind, I appreciate you being here, and I've never heard any argument, nor did I ever say the Century Sportsman's Club was in any way complicit in misleading the town, the town officials or anything. I don't think anybody up here thought that, but I can tell you for myself, I certainly didn't think it, because why would I?
Well, if I may comment quick, I appreciate your concerns, and at this point, I guess there's no further discussion. You have three board of selectmen who have chosen they're not going to vote in favor, so instead of trying to convince an unconvincable board at this time, I appreciate your time, and have a good evening.
Is there anything else? So the motion on the floor is to deny the application, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. I'll entertain a motion to refund any fees that were paid to the town in the form of any permits, be it food permit, tent permit, anything, refund those fees back to the Auburn, the Century Sportsman's Club.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? And just, if we can just leave on a positive note, I know this has been a difficult hearing, but for the community out there who's listening, for any reporters, I told you I've attended events there, and I think maybe the public now knows that we have a gem down on Rochdale Street, that it's a great venue to hold a wedding, to hold a 50th birthday party, to hold events that support the community. So we wish you all well and hope that the word gets out there that your place is available for functions and that the community takes advantage. for functions, and that the community takes advantage of that. Thank you. Thank you, Lieutenant Lemon, thank you, Mrs. Coyle, thank you. Could I have a motion to move up Agenda Item 6B, C, and D?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. So before you, we have under Town Manager Items, a vote, I'm sorry, B, process and regulations regarding truck exclusions, and closes information provided by DPW Director Bill Coyle. Mr. Coyle, please, if you could join us.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for waiting.
Members of the board, Madam Chairman, I'll try to do this fairly briefly, it's been a long evening so far. The town manager asked me to come before you this evening to discuss the process of truck exclusions. It's something that has come up over the years several times, and typically, I would say, once or twice a year, I get a call from a resident concerned about truck traffic. And I'm sure the board also is contacted quite frequently as well. And I can tell you that when I do get the phone call, I know typically the answer that relative to a truck exclusion, the resident's probably not going to be happy with the outcome eventually with what that answer is. So what we try to do is to see if there's other options to alleviate what concerns that they have. And I can tell you that there was an incident recently where we were contacted, and I believe the board was also contacted relative to the truck traffic up on Packard Chug Hill. And after looking at the situation, we did make some changes and install traffic signs to try to improve the situation. But in general, I did want to talk a little bit about truck exclusions, and why, they're very complicated, and the criteria is extremely difficult to really enact a truck exclusion. So I'll try to go over it briefly and be happy to answer some of the questions, and I want to just touch upon some of the key points that we have to look at as far as a truck exclusion. It's not as simple as put up a sign that says no trucks. If it was, that would be very easy to do, and I think years past perhaps in some communities, that may have happened, and unfortunately, it's not that easy. So the first thing that we look at is whether or not the, if you're looking for a truck exclusion for one roadway, is that roadway, first of all, completely within the town of Auburn? Because if it involves another community, you would not only need a public hearing in our community, but also the adjacent community as well. I think several years past, we, I think we had a discussion relative to a truck exclusion on Milbury Street, and I think that came up. That probably goes back five years ago. And again, that would involve the town of Milbury, and so, you know, that complicates it as well. One of the big, main thresholds, and I did call and contact the District 3 Traffic Engineer a few weeks ago, just to confirm that this information hasn't changed, is that the percent trucks on a roadway, has to be a minimum of 5% trucks on the road. So when you think of that, and I know people get frustrated that when they see a truck or trailer on their roadway, that they're not happy about, and none of us are, none of us wants to see a large percentage of truck traffic in our neighborhood. But to exceed that threshold of 5% is unusual on local roads for the most part. In addition to that 5%, if you did have a truck exclusion, it also doesn't stop delivery trucks going through the neighborhood, it doesn't stop if there's a business in the area for those trucks going through that neighborhood. So again, that's another complicating factor as well. If, and so you would, if you did exceed the 5%, some of the other things, if you, and the handout that I gave you talks about, I won't go through all of them, I'll just touch upon a couple of them. You have to do an engineering study, what the traffic volume is, the percent trucks, commercial vehicles with a carrying capacity over 2.5 tons. You have to have a map of an area, you have to designate, if this is the street you're going to have excluded for truck traffic, what is the alternate route? So now you have to identify an alternate route, and quite often now, you're going to have one neighborhood not happy with another neighborhood, once you identify that alternate route. You look at the physical characteristics of the alternate route, whether or not it can accommodate trucks, there are posted bridges on that roadway. You look at the proximity of the additional, I'm sorry, the additional distance that you'd have to travel. You look at the hours, what the exclusion would be, most of often, it would be a 24-hour exclusion. And then, once you take all this information, and if you meet all these criteria, and you hold a public hearing, then you have to go, you have the support of the board, then you have to go to the state for approval, and hope that they approve it as well. So it's a long process, it's very complicated, so in the end, what we typically end up looking at is what can we do to improve the situation that the butters are dealing with, whether or not it's signage, if there's any improvements we can make physically on the roadway. So we try to look at other ways to improve the situation that the neighbors are dealing with, and, you know, we try to get creative in what we do, and quite often, they're happy that we've done something, and hope that it gets better. But I did want to come to you and speak to you briefly about truck exclusions. I know, very exciting topics, so it's just almost as exciting as speed limit signs and stop signs, but I'd be happy to try to address and answer any questions that you might have relative to that as well.
Thank you for the update. Are there any questions? Mr. Holstrom.
I have a comment through the chair. Bill, thanks so much for coming up here and kind of spelling that out, and I did have a chance to go up to that particular area on Packard Chug Street, and I do know they're, they are very, very unsettled with the truck traffic up there, and it's frustrating that they cannot get up and say, let's put a sign up, and we say, we're done with this. And I do want to, and appreciate you coming forward and bringing that up. And I wish there was some way that we could, you know, develop a program so that we can get those trucks off those streets, but as you explained to us tonight, there's a lot to it, and there's a lot of repercussions to go along with it. So I do appreciate you coming and explaining that tonight.
Thank you. And one of the things you can try to do, if a resident can identify what company it is, sometimes perhaps you can contact that company and see if they can take an alternate route versus having a signage prohibiting the use of that roadway. So those are the types of things when residents will call, ask if they know what company it is, and sometimes they actually have taken the initiative and called the company themselves. So that can be helpful as well. Thank you.
Anything else on this? Thanks so much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Mr. Potukas.
Paul Potukas, 231 Milbury Street. Is this something that you should ask the legislators to try to simplify, and make it simpler for residents to have? I mean, it seems very complicated, but it seems like it's made complicated, and maybe this is something the legislature should look at to try to simplify? I mean, I'd like to see more things from the select board that you may not think are totally in your control, but your, part of your power is jawboning. Part of your power is getting our state representative and our state senator to look at issues that may not have been looked at for years, and probably these reasons that Mr. Coyle, which I have a lot of respect for, he's giving the same reasons another engineer in another town is giving. Maybe it's time to look at it a little differently. You know, I think there are a lot of laws that need to be looked at, and a select board has a lot of power. I know some people laughed when I recommended a couple of years ago that you look and express some dismay at the cost of drugs, and you say, well, that's not in our purview. But it is. If you jawbone enough, if enough select boards complain to the state legislature that the cost of drugs is too high, and you should allow for interstate competition or competition between the United States and Canada, there are some outrageous costs for that. Maybe this is something else that needs to be clarified. Just recently, I ran into another law that I think is, needs to be looked at, and that was the refrigerator law. And I think it's a number of ones that need to be looked at, and it's, and that one was a simple one, is that I'm required to take the door off the refrigerator.
Mr. Potukas, if you don't mind, I just want to stay on the...
Right. But my point is, is that...
Commercial vehicles.
Is this something that, and I'd like to see more of it, recommendations to our state legislature at these meetings, as to something to look at and to clarify or to simplify, or to make it more palatable for the people on Packard Chug Street, or for Paul Potukas seeing the 18-wheelers, which I caught free on my street, that I personally saw, and scared me to death that they were going off the berm, off the embankment on an 18-foot wide road, and had, and tried to maneuver all the way to Milbury, an 18-wheeler, three of them, and almost went off the embankment next to my house, down with the bowl and the other livestock down there. So I just, you know, we can say, oh, it's difficult, and it's hard to do, but maybe someone could look at it and simplify it.
Mr. Coyle, did you want to comment on that?
If I could through the chair, it's not that I don't necessarily agree with the process, it is a difficult process, but I think it's a difficult process for a good reason. I think that the state wants continuity throughout the community, I think this probably goes even further through the entire nation, through the manual and uniform traffic control devices on the process. I think that you want to make sure we identify an adequate alternate route, they want to make sure that we're not doing this for one truck, that there's a certain percentage. So I don't necessarily disagree with their process, things, and I will say, obviously, things can always be improved upon. I mean, these, what I printed out, this was an amendment made back in 2009, so anytime there's amendments being made, kind of leads you to believe that there's been changes, and to try to improve things. So it is a difficult process to go through, and to achieve that truck exclusion, I don't say I disagree with the process, I think that it's here for a reason, and I think there's been a lot of, you know, people, engineers and citizens involved with developing this procedure. So that's just my feeling on it, but again, things can always be improved upon, but overall, it's not a bad process.
Great. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Potukas, for your comments.
Thank you for the scenic sign and the speed limit sign on Milbury Street. Appreciate it.
Very welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Coyle, do we have anything else for you tonight?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks so much. So I don't keep our last visitor here. Deputy Chief Johnson is here for Agenda Item 6C and 6D, the first being a vote to declare fire rescue department 1993 Ford F-350 forestry truck as surplus property to be disposed of. Deputy Chief, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
So what are we doing? Getting rid of a truck?
Getting rid of our forestry truck, unfortunately. It broke down, it failed inspection, and the part that is needed for the braking system, they no longer make. So in order for it to be repaired, it would have to be, the part would actually have to be made by the DPW in order to get the truck running again, which at that point is a safety concern for us, having somebody make a part that doesn't belong in the truck. And there is also other concerns with the truck and other problems.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Yes, I do have one question. I just threw the chair. You're reducing a force with this Ford F-350. Have you got anything to replace that for forestry needs?
At this time, we don't, we've been researching a whole bunch of different options, looking to hopefully adjust our capital budget shortly, and address it as soon as we can.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we vote to declare the fire rescue department 1993 Ford F-350 forestry truck, Forestry 1, as surplus property to be disposed of.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. And the next item, Deputy Chief, the request from the fire chief for the Ford, for the board vote to declare three bunk beds as surplus property.
Yes, these bunk beds, we've had for almost 20 years, I'd say, and now that we're renovating the station, the DPW is actually building the beds that go in each room, so at this point, we have no longer a need for it, and we plan to donate it to the Brenfield Fire Department.
Are there any questions, comments? I'll just say, I absolutely appreciate the fire department's Facebook page, so we can get updates on all of these wonderful projects happening at the fire station. It's, the DPW is doing fabulous work.
Yeah, they're doing a great job.
They really are, and residents have an opportunity to see that through your Facebook page, so thank you.
Welcome.
Is there a motion?
Motion to declare three bunk beds as surplus property to be disposed of.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thanks so much for waiting.
Thank you, Chief. Have a great night.
You too, thanks. So we're going to go back to, on the, to the agenda, we're under Board of Selectmen Items 5E, vote on the 2017 Fall Special Town Meeting. First, I'd entertain a motion to vote to schedule a Fall Special Town Meeting on Tuesday, October 24th, 2017, at 7:00 p.m.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. And then, is there a motion to open the warrant?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Holstrom.
Is there a plan of attack for the warrant? Have you contacted all of the necessary departments and people that would be interested in putting an article on the warrant?
Yes, when we made a recommendation for the October 24th, and a number of things were really driving that date, but we met as a group and decided that that would be the best date to hold a Fall Town Meeting, in consideration of the upcoming annual tax classification hearing, and things of that nature. Had discussions with the school department, they asked that we, originally, we had it the day after Labor Day, which I believe is the 5th, but the school committee is meeting on the 6th, and they asked if we could keep it open a day after the school committee, since their recommendations for any warrant articles would be going before their board on Wednesday, the 6th, so we agreed, and we are recommending that we hold it open until the 7th. All other departments, division heads, boards, committees have been notified well in advance, so they understood that we were going to bring this recommendation to the board.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? So the motion is to open the warrant. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Next, I would entertain a motion to close the warrant for the special town, Fall Special Town Meeting on September 7th, 2017, at 4:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Moving on, the next item we have is gift acceptance in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. The first item, and I'll read through them all, we're there for one department, it's for the fire rescue department, and it totals $1,375, and the amount of $50 from Edward and Susan Shigru. This is all to the fire department gift account. Gloria McTie for $50, Karen Parker $50, John and Kathleen Phildon $100, Mary Stone $25, Christopher and Susan Shanice $25, Mary and Francis, Mary and Frances Gibbons $25, Stephen and Carol Sabatalo $50, Rita Bodett $20, Michael and Anne Marie Bushy $100, Mark Williamson $100, Mary Ellen Boyle $20, Terrence and Martha Hastings $35, Edward and Maureen Stefanini $50, Laura Jafarian $25, The Way Company Charitable Trust $500, and James and Christina McCarthy in memory of Daniel Hogan $100, Kathleen Mae Voight in the amount of $50 in memory of Daniel Hogan. Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we accept them with gratitude, and just mention that the total is, so we thoughtfully added up, of almost $1,400, so we're very, very fortunate to have residents who are so generous.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. The next item we have is from Daniel Carpenter, for $375, for an approximate value of $375 for goods, refreshments for the recognition event. Is there, oh, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion we accept with gratitude.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thank you. And next, we have an update on the recognition event, town employees, boards, and commission members, from the subcommittee, I'm not sure who's speaking on this.
I didn't ask for it to be on. I didn't ask for it to be on, so I was surprised when I saw it, Madam Chair. But I'm happy to give a general update. I'm glad myself, Mr. Liberty. Invitations, we did meet on the 7th to stuff envelopes. Those envelopes have made their way to the various people who are on our list, which, to think that this event could encompass almost 180 people is amazing, and it is very nice. I did also want to say that the RSVP is up on August 28th. There is a special website for that, or not a website, but email for it. Or they can either contact Mr. Liberty or I, and our numbers are available on the website under the Board of Selectmen. A few things that I know some board members mentioned that they would like to contribute to the event. We do need table coverings. We do need centerpieces, as well as frames, actual frames for the certificates. So I don't know if board members would like individually or together to volunteer, not necessarily right now, but to help put some... We were thinking of actually putting together some centerpieces. So we would have to set up a date for us to do that. And I certainly make no pretense that I'm great at it, but I'm willing to try. So, you know, August 28th, we need people, former members who might be attending. Just let us know so that we can include you in the number for refreshments, so that we don't want to run out. We don't want somebody to catch something. But it's actually shaping up to be a good event. We would be remiss if we didn't thank the town manager's staff for assisting us in various ways. The town clerk's office and her staff for helping us. The library director and her staff also assisted us in many ways that were consequential to the success of the event, which we hope will be enjoyed by all.
Great. Thank you. Anything else on that? Now, just the next item is the press release on the recognition event, which I think we saw a couple of great pieces. So certainly, the word is out there that this is happening. So let's hope that people, RSVP, well, you said, August 28th, correct?
Yes, please.
Great. Thank you so much for your work on this. We have no proclamations. Going back to town manager items, excuse me. I'll entertain a motion to declare two couches and two chairs at the senior center as surplus items to be disposed of due to their condition.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Moving down to Item 6E, that is being continued to September 11th. We, under tabled items, we have 7A. Form subcommittee to investigate possibilities of residents' remote participation in board meetings. So that was a vote that we took at the last meeting. And the vote was, Sharon, check the minutes, to form a subcommittee. So I'm not sure, I know it's your item, Mr. LaLiberty. I would assume that you want to participate in that subcommittee?
Yes, I would.
And is there anyone else who wants to participate in that?
Oh, Mr. LaLiberty.
Great. Thank you, Mr. LaLiberty. And Mr. Berthew on that. Sharon, thank you. Under boredom, excuse me. That sounded terrible, boredom. Under Board of Selectmen member items, and this is Mr. LaLiberty's item, discussion into researching the feasibility of adding a town bylaw that would ban the distribution of single-use plastic bags in Auburn. Mr. LaLiberty.
So this is something that came to my attention when I saw other towns doing it. I started to do research into what other towns had done, the bylaws that they've written to ban bags, and why mainly was, why they were going about banning them. So it's something that I wanted to pursue. But of course, I didn't want to pursue it without talking to the other members of the board. I obviously didn't want to go around the board or make it look like I was. So I contacted the chair and town manager to talk about the best way to go about doing this. And they thought that it would be best to come before you, let you know that this is something I've been looking into and would like to pursue with your support. So...
And thank you. So I guess, so what I would suggest that the board do is take a vote to authorize Mr. LaLiberty to move forward with this feasibility study and work through the town manager so that he can work with the appropriate departments, specifically, I believe, Board of Health and Solid Waste, to get information. And that would, any contact to town employees would be through the town manager. Mr. Holstrom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Mr. LaLiberty. I guess I need a little bit more information on the distribution of single-use plastic bags. What would this project entail?
Mainly, what they've been looking at is the use of bags at grocery stores, is the best example I can give, or any other retail establishment, excluding, of course, bags without handles, produce bags, bags you would put nuts in or fish, meat, raw meat, to keep it from contaminating other foods, and replacing them with recyclable paper bags or reusable bags or biodegradable and marine-life-degradable plastic bags. And the main reasoning being that a lot of these bags end up in the environment, contaminating the soil, or mostly, the ocean is the biggest concern for a lot of towns. Kills marine life, terrestrial life, and prevents soil from actually maintaining its nutrients. They've actually done studies on that. So that's why I've been looking into it. And the bags that would be affected are grocery bags or others that are handed out by retail establishments, again, excluding newspaper bags. What else do they have? Dry cleaning bags, things like that would be completely excluded from this.
Yes, Mr. Holstrom.
Through the chair again. You know, I'm all for that type of thing. There's so much of this plastic floating around all over the place, and it does make a mess, and it does not deteriorate. How much of a project would it be to implement some kind of a bylaw like that?